All right, thank you. We're going to call our Select Board meeting together here tonight. It's Tuesday, September 12. The hour is 7:00 p.m. Let me invite everyone in the room to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of scheduled matters here, actually several. The first matter, scheduled for 7:00 p.m., is a liquor license transfer. I'll read the hearing notice, and if there's anyone here present for the applicant, please come forward and sit here while I'm doing that. But notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 138 on Tuesday, September 12, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the application of Yuho Inc. by Stephen Lin and Chao Yang Ying to transfer an all-alcoholic beverage license from Tuxbury Deli Inc., doing business as Deli King, and to operate this license on said premises located at 885 Main Street, thank you, in Tuxbury, described as "one-story building consisting of concrete block and wood frame construction, containing approximately 3,928 square feet of floor space, two entrances in front and open entrances in rear." The hearing will be held in the Select Board's meeting room in the main hall of 1,009 Main Street in Tuxbury. We always welcome input from the public, and we recommend that comments be submitted in writing to the Select Board in honor before noon time on Thursday, September 7. We also have copies here before you of the tombstone notice that was published and dated August 23 of this year. So let me welcome our guests in front of us and ask if they'd both introduce themselves for the record.
Good evening. My name is John Gallant. I represent the applicant in this case, and I'm with Stephen Lin of Ujo.
All right, and welcome. Okay, Counselor, so do you want to just tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do here and where things stand at the present moment?
Yes, I represent the applicant, Stephen Lin, and the corporation Ujo. This applicant has been in the restaurant business for over 30 years. He owns and operates a restaurant presently in Drakehead, Massachusetts, which is Asian cuisine under the same name. I've given you a copy of the menu because what he intends to do with this location is similar to what he has at Drakehead, that location that's been there for 10 years. It'll be similar cuisine, a similar menu type, and as well as the restaurant itself in terms of the setup and operation of it. Initially, this location won't have sushi, based upon they just have to set up the restaurant and the kitchen for it, and there'll be renovations after he buys it. But after a while, the menu will look substantially similar to the menu that you have in front of you, as well as the look of the restaurant that he has at Drakehead. Many of you might have been there or maybe been to his restaurant in Drakehead, but he's been in that location for 10 years, has a full liquor license there, never had any problem with anything in terms of the state or his permitting or his licensing, but it'll be primarily, it'll be Asian cuisine. Deli King has been around the town for quite a many years. I know when I was growing up as a child, it was here and it hasn't changed much. So it'll need some renovations after he buys it, both inside, there'll be some carpet and furniture and that whole, I don't know what the right word is, buffet line that they have inside Deli King. He's going to eliminate that. It'll be more of a traditional restaurant with a kitchen area, the buyer area, and then the restaurant area up front. He submitted his application showing its intended hours of operation, similar to what he has over in Drakehead, which is basically 10:30 on Monday through Thursday, 11:30 to 9:30 p.m., and then on Friday and Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and on Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Again, it's a, the square footage of the place is approximately, a little less than 4,000, 3,928, but he's purchasing the building as well as the equipment that's in the restaurant, and then will be renovating once he does it. So we can answer any questions in terms of what he intends to do operationally or in terms of the look of the restaurant, but essentially, we're just looking for the transfer of this existing license so we can operate that business out of it. He has this financing through Enterprise Bank of Trust, and the balance of it will be coming from his own funds, which we've submitted to the town.
Yep, we've seen a fair amount of that information, so that's helpful. I do know, and I just want to speak to this and ask you if you can fill in some blanks, but we're informed that there's a few pieces of information that are still missing from the package, like revised floor plan, and I think there's some departmental checklist items that still need to be tended to. So have you had conversations with the various town departments?
Yes, we've submitted the, all of the applications with the other departments of Board of Health for the food and the common victuals license, so I think all of that, they should have all that information now. Based upon my last conversation, we submitted an revised copy of the lease. He's basically purchasing the property, and then we're leasing it to his other entity. So there's some fine tunes that'll be developed once he purchases the place and finances it, where he knows what the cost is. But he has submitted all of those outstanding checklist items to the town. He's made application for the food and transfer licenses, but because there's a lot of details that won't be known until after he purchases it in terms of the restaurant, you can't fill all of that in until that actually happens. But we can work with the town. He'll, we don't anticipate there'll be any problem with the transfer with the Board of Health approvals and the food victuals license.
And am I correct in what you just said, that the lease is from one corporate entity that your client owns to another corporate entity?
Yes, he's a wholly owned, he's a president and treasurer of both companies, as well as the owner of both companies, so he's basically leasing it to himself, and that's something the bank wants as well. They want to see a lease prepared.
I think A B C requires it.
Yeah, and I've given you a copy of that lease, but the numbers are blank because we won't know until we close and then we get to financing what the carrying costs are per month.
All right, okay. All right, do my colleagues have any questions that they want to pose to the applicant? Mr. Krabman, you look like.
Yeah, I was just waiting. So I know we don't have a floor plan of what's going on, but the setup of it is the way now you're saying you're going to renovate the whole area. There's a back part that I think that's been closed for a while that was a bar.
Yes.
Is that all going to be, I mean?
That'll be renovated as well. The bar area, they intend to keep, so that whole buffet line that they have there with the hole exposed, that'll all be changed. There won't be any buffet line. It'll be a closed kitchen off area, and all the approvals from the Board of Health regarding the renovations for that. And there is a lot of new equipment there that he'll keep, but there's also a lot of new equipment that he has to supply for his, for the cooking of the Asian food is a little different than how they cook the food over there. But the bar area will be renovated, and that'll be open separate. I don't know what their operation is or has been regarding the bar.
Never seen it open.
Oh, really? I've seen it open, but it's been a long time since I've seen it open.
Do you have any idea, like, how many seats for the bar area that you're proposing?
Yeah, how many seats will be in the bar?
I have no idea.
We don't know exactly until he renovates and does his renovations over there, what it'll end up with, but it's not going to change in terms of its existing size. It's going to be primarily where, what it is now, because the area is defined. He's not going to tear any walls down to be able to do that. He's just going to renovate the carpet and the furniture and the bar area, and the stools will all be new, like the front area. All of those booths will all be changed and new with new furniture, as well as carpet, and so that all will be different than what it looks like now, too. It'll be more of an Asian, it'll be more of what the restaurant is in Drakehead. We certainly welcome you, he welcomes you to visit that location because it'll be similar to that lookout as well.
My real thought on this was if you're doing major renovations, are you building a larger bar? That was the thing, and you're not, it doesn't sound like you're building.
No, we're not going to change the size of anything in there. We're just renovating it primarily, and mostly cosmetic stuff, mostly carpet, furniture, things like that. The only part that'll be substantially changed will be that whole buffet area will be eliminated and that, and it'll be a more traditional kitchen, restaurant-type look than what he has over in Drakehead.
All right, that's all I had, thank you.
I have one question. I'm looking at the workman's compen, are they unemployment assistance, and it's titled DLC Hospitality.
It says what, that's the name of the company?
Yeah.
That is the existing workman's comp that he has at the existing location, and he's just going to give an addendum to that for this location. So certainly, if we need an endorsement or to that policy, we can obtain. That's easy to do. I could just call the insurance company and have that correct it if that's the case.
Okay, and one more question. You stated that he has no violations.
He's never had any issues of any type at his existing restaurant, for either his operation, his food license, or his liquor license.
And all his current employees are tip certified?
Yes, yep, absolutely, and have, all these will be tip certified as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, I'm excited to have you here, and we went through your application. I appreciate what you did include. I agree with my colleagues that we, you know, we may have to make this conditional upon other items being included. So you're going to add sushi later. Are you going to do a sushi bar or just table service for sushi?
Right now, I don't think to add sushi, because I know town hall has a sushi restaurant down there. Right now, we're still thinking about.
Okay, so sushi is sort of.
Yeah, we're not sure how that's going to be added in the future and what the format of that will look like. Right now, at the beginning, it won't have it.
Sure, sure. Will you be on site, Mr. Lin, as this is, as the restaurant's being renovated and then opening? What's your plan for managing this restaurant, since now you'll have this second location?
She's asking if you're going to be on site to manage the, most of renovations as well as the operation of the restaurant.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah, he intends to be there full-time. He has a manager at the other location as well.
Okay, that's great, that's what I've understood.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, yeah, so I will, before I ask for any motions, I'll certainly welcome you, hopefully, to Tuxbury. It's nice to have another interested business owner want to join our community. I think the questions that were asked about tip certification and familiarity with service of alcohol are absolutely important in this context, and, you know, unfortunately, shortly when we finish with your hearing, we have a couple of situations that involve the allegation of improper service of alcohol. So we've had those in the past with other restaurants and liquor stores, and sadly, you know, we don't take that very lightly here appropriately, right? So I'm pleased to hear that you haven't had any issues in Drakehead, and hopefully that will continue here, but we ask you to really take special care with that responsibility.
He does, he takes that very seriously, and he has over in his restaurant in Drakehead since it's operational.
Yeah, that's a huge responsibility that we all have, so, okay. If there's no other comments, I will ask if there's.
One alibi.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, one alibi. So just to clarify, you said that the updated floor plan was delivered to the town?
No, no, we don't have an updated floor plan. Floor plan you have is the existing floor plan. He doesn't have an architectural floor plan for the renovations. We have to purchase it first, get into the restaurant, and then we can submit something a little more detailed than we have now. Whether we'll have, I don't know if we'll have an architectural floor plan before he finishes renovations. It depends. Right now, he doesn't anticipate there's going to be any structural that's changed other than the removal of that buffet area. So most of it's going to be cosmetic, so we can certainly outline it, we can try to present a better plan than what you have. The one you had is the old Deli King plan, which doesn't give you much information, I understand, but he'll do the best he can to give you a different plan and work with the Board of Health in terms of the kitchen and the restaurant areas, which is really the most important part.
Perfect, and what did you say was delivered? I think I just captured notes and missed something, so what was delivered in the past week since the application was made? You said there were a few items.
My associate did most of it, but I believe the workers' compensation insurance, the list of all the equipment in the kitchen was the common victuals license, the applications to the Board of Health, all the financial information, loan commitment was all submitted. There was no new floor plan other than the existing one that we had. I think the dumpster plan, as well as, I have pictures of the dumpster if you want them, but there's an existing dumpster there, it's in an allocated area, and it's out back, but they don't have a plan of it other than a drawn diagram, so we've submitted that as well. So I think all of that stuff has all been submitted, as well as the applications to the Board of Health for the food licenses, because we have to have those applications in place for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, this is a public hearing, so let me ask if there's anyone in the audience that came down here tonight to speak to this matter. I don't see anybody rising, so we'll move forward. May I take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, for our recording secretary's purposes, the motion's offered by Ms. Wellman and seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that would be a five to zero vote. Okay, so are there any, what's the preference of my colleagues on the board? Are there any motions that anyone wishes to make?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the. The transfer, yeah, but I'm looking at the common vic license application, yeah. The transfer of the existing license.
Okay, is that the extent to your motion? That's your full motion to transfer, authorize the transfer? Okay, I'm sorry, I, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Motion was made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Krabman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote opposed for the only reason that I think there's items missing here, and I would, my own personal preference would be to have them vote be contingent on receipt of that information.
Absolutely.
It can't leave our offices until Town Hall has that material. Otherwise, I wholeheartedly would support the application, so we'll record it as a four to one vote.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
And we wish you the best. Thanks. Okay, we have a little bit of a snafu here, so we have two public hearings scheduled at the same time at 7:10 p.m. So I'm going to read the hearing notice for the layout, public hearing for the layout of Frasier Lane, scheduled for 7:10. I'm going to ask that my colleagues table that matter until the conclusion of the show cause hearings, and then we'll come back to it. And I want to ask those parties who are here for that, I want to thank them for their patience. I don't really have a choice in the matter, so we'll try to make this as efficient as possible. So the first matter is notice of public hearing, layout of Frasier Lane as a public way. Select Board invites you to attend a public hearing on September 12, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. in the Town Hall, 1,009 Main Street, Tuxbury, Massachusetts, regarding the layout of Frasier Lane as a public way. The town will formally assume responsibility for maintenance and repair of the roadway. Prior to the hearing, the Board suggests you communicate any questions or concerns that you may have about the street to Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick by email or by telephone. Okay, may I ask for a motion to table that hearing until the conclusion of the two show cause hearings?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well, so that would be a five to zero vote. Okay, the next matter we have at 7:10 is a show cause hearing pertaining to Wamset Entertainment Center. So let me ask if there's a representative of Wamset present, and then invite him to come forward. You're not bringing your counselor up here with you?
I could. I don't know what he'll say.
All right, so this is, this is a formal show cause hearing, and normally, we would have an evidentiary phase. We'd ask the police chief to give us some information around the incident in question. So my first question, and after I ask you to identify yourself for the record, I'll come back and ask you that first question.
Donald McLaren, Wamset Entertainment.
Thank you. So my first question is, I think you've been made aware from the August 9, 2023 letter as to what transpired, and what I would like to ask for the record is if you stipulate to the incident itself and agree that it took place. If not, we have to dive into the facts of the matter.
No, 100%, it took place.
All right, so what we'll do is we will move as a board to the deliberation and the penalty phase as opposed to the fact-finding phase, okay? And what I'm going to do is ask the police chief if he has any comments and any recommendations for the board to consider. I'll give you an opportunity to offer any comments that you want us to consider.
Yep.
And then the board will entertain its deliberations and come to some type of a conclusion.
Great.
So chief, do you have any comments to add? And the facts of the matter have been agreed to, we don't need to go deep into that.
Mr. Chairman, board, thank you for having me. I do want to say, and I think it's important to state, that we value our partnerships with all of our businesses. We try to provide a level of education, we give notice. I actually conducted a Zoom hearing with all of the liquor establishments. Not all of them showed, Wamset Lanes did show, and we talked about exactly what we were going to do and how we were going to do it. I want you to all know that there are no tricks when we do this. It's simply someone under the age of 21 goes into the establishment, orders alcohol, and if no one asks them for identification, it's a violation. It's that simple. There's no tricks, there's no phony IDs, we don't try to trick or, or there's no gotcha moments, if you will. I think it's important to note that we went back to Wamset Lanes and did another compliance check, and they did pass, but I do think that we have to remain consistent from what we've done in the past and continue to do that from past violations.
Okay, thanks, chief. All right, Mr. McLaren, do you want to offer any comments, any remediation that you've taken since this incident, or anything you want to inform the board about as it relates to this?
Yeah, I think it's important for the board to know that I take 100% responsibility for any actions taken on my property within the building and my entire staff. The chief, Columbus, has been great with communicating to us as we've received letter, given us a heads up. We've received the video, the conference call, the special training, and we took all of that stuff very serious, and we went above and beyond to communicate to our staff on multiple, multiple occasions. And you guys might see some paperwork in front of you that I had submitted, I just didn't want to surprise you guys with it at the last minute, but I got a zero tolerance policy. It's humiliating to even be sitting here and having a conversation with you guys about this. We did terminate the employee as soon as it happened, as Chief Columbus had stated, that he did come in and issue another compliance check, and we were there, we passed. But I do try to go above and beyond. We have the liquor, the liquor ID stations, there's seven of them throughout the building, and we serve a lot of alcohol in our establishment, and we have to take it very serious. And unfortunately, I'm sitting here today to have a conversation with you. I just sit here to say I'm sorry, and I'm going to continue to do everything in my power to maintain and exceed our policies and, and what the state law requires. I will be going back and addressing our training as we already have. You guys have a copy of our training, which was of the date of, of the incident, and making sure that everybody's being ID'd and using the liquor scanners and everything that it has to offer, and I'm open to suggestions from, from anybody here on the board, including Chief Columbus, as to how they may feel a little bit more comfortable, but I stand by us being, and being very confident that we're doing the best of our abilities to maintain that.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, do my colleagues have any questions of either the chief or Mr. McLaren?
I just have one.
The Hall.
Didn't use this, didn't ask for an ID. So what good is the scanner if you don't ask for the ID?
Yeah, I'm going to base, again, I take full responsibility, I'm going to base this on a fluke with, I mean, even a family friend, you know, I have zero, zero, zero tolerance for it, so nobody gets a free ride, so we terminated him immediately once we, we got it, but yeah, what good is the technology if you're, if you're not going to use it, 100%, so.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a quick question for the chief. Mr. McLaren answered my questions, and of course, it was his comments, and I appreciate the documentation you gave us, thank you. In this particular case, there were two individuals that were served, is that correct?
No.
At Wamset?
No. One.
It says two underage males went to Wamset Entertainment.
They went in, but one, they were together, but only one asked and was served.
Okay, thank you, that was what I wanted to, I appreciate that, thank you very much, that's all, I have no, nothing else, thank you.
All right, anyone on my left? No, okay. Okay, so we're at the point of establishing a penalty for this violation that has been stipulated to. If you recall, we have a longstanding policy here on the first violations, my understanding this is the Wamset Entertainment Center's first violation, and that ranges from a warning to a seven-day suspension. So do my colleagues have thoughts on the appropriate penalty they wish to render in this situation?
Mr. Chairman, I've read through all the documents, I've looked at what the applicant to do. I understand that we consider this totally unacceptable, but reading through the package, it seems like the owner is trying to do his best of what he can do to train, and this comes into, we don't have machines working there, you have a human error of what's going on. It's, looks like you've done everything you could possibly do to inform that employee what he needs to do, why it's important to do it, but I do think we need to take some action on it. And my suggestion would be to issue a warning to the premises, and that would be put on file, and if a second offense comes into matter, then we'd have a violation and revoke the license for a certain time, but seeing that this is, it appears you went to the training, you followed everything that sounded recommended that you do, you trained the employees, you told them what to do, but unfortunately, that employee did not follow that. So my recommendation would be a warning on that, to be pleased and is filed.
Okay, are you making that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I am, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments, or is there a second to that particular motion?
I have a comment.
Ms. Wellman.
I appreciate Mr. Krabman's comments and his, his motion. I think that it's important for this board to be consistent with all other violations of this policy. This is not, it's not a surprise. There's all the opportunity, and I appreciate all the work that the owner has done, but I think it's important for us to remain consistent in the past, in the recent past. It's been our practice to issue a three-day suspension with two days held in abeyance in the, in the case of a second offense that happens. So if there's a second offense, the two days then become into question with a, with an additional thing. So this is just one offense, but I would not support Mr. Krabman's motion. I think we should be consistent with the previous work that this board has done and held for the last number of years.
Any further comment? All right, so I do have a motion on the floor. I want to ask again if there's a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Holland, so that will call for a vote on that motion, which would be to issue a warning. All those in favor of that action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
And I am opposed to that as well. So that motion fails. So let me ask if there are any other motions.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to suspend the license for three days with one day to be served on Tuesday, October 10, and two days to be held in abeyance in case of a second offense within 24 months.
Second.
Okay, just make sure we got this right. So three-day suspension, one day to be served on, what'd you say, Tuesday, October 10?
Correct.
And the other two held in abeyance?
Correct.
Okay, that motion was offered by Mr. Mackey, that was seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so by my count, I have the chair's voting in the affirmative, so I think that's four votes in the affirmative and one opposed. Do I have that right? Okay, four to one for the record. Okay, so Mr. McLaren, in light of that vote, I'd ask you just to reach out to the town manager's office, and he or his staff will work with you relative to the, the license. It has to be turned in for the 10th of October, and then it will be returned to you immediately at the close of that day or the next morning.
Okay.
Okay? So thank you, and we appreciate the spirit in which you came here tonight, and I sense from the documentation you gave us and the sincerity that came through loud and clear about your attention to details that this was hopefully a one-time occurrence, and it won't be something that we see as a pattern, so hopefully that will be the case.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I want to take us back, if I can find my notes here, let's see, we have another have, um, another situation, similar to what I just described at 7:15, so I'm going to read this, um, hearing notice for the, uh, layout of Terramore Drive, and then I'm going to ask my colleagues to table that matter for a few moments. Um, the Select Board invites you to attend a public hearing on September 12, 2023 at 7:15 PM in the Town Hall, 1009 Main Street, Tuxbury, Mass., regarding the layout of Terramore Drive as a public way. The town will formally assume responsibility for maintenance and repair of the roadway. Prior to the hearing, the board suggests that you communicate any questions or concerns that you might have about the street to the Assistant Town Manager, Steve Sadwick, by email or telephone. Um, let me ask if there's a motion, uh, to, uh, table that matter until the conclusion of the show cause hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Okay, thank you, and again, my apologies to the applicant on that matter, um, and I thank them for their patience while we work through this second item. Okay, this is a show cause hearing, um, scheduled at 7:15 for a liquor license violation pertaining to the Shell Food Mart located at 365 Main Street, is there someone here from that organization? You can just come forward. And if you don't mind, just, um, give us your name and affiliation with the, um, Shell?
Yep, uh, my name is Christina Sidoropoulos, I'm the manager at the gas station, it's a petrol gas station.
Thank you, Christina, and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, you probably just watched as we went through that discussion, so my first question for you is, um, um, you received a letter from the town dated August 9. Is there any question around the facts of the violation, are you in agreement with the fact that it took place, and, um, we don't need to decide from a fact basis that it did or didn't occur, right?
Yes, we're in agreement, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Um, so that's going to allow us to move to just, um, the, um, the penalty phase of the discussion, so Chief, do you have comments on this particular matter?
I do, thank you again, um, as I stated earlier, partnerships with the businesses is very important, um, I don't know if, um, this particular business, uh, attended the meeting that we had, so that might be a question, uh, to ask, I'm not sure about that, uh, we did send the video out as well as a recording, um, but I will say, um, they did have two more checks at that business, and they were in compliance after that violation.
Too subsequent to that event?
That is correct, that is correct.
Very.
And again, I would just recommend that we stay consistent.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let me turn to you, and, um, I'll ask the question that the Chief just noted, did you, do you know if your staff attended?
I attended it, yes, I did.
Very good, okay, so that's a good positive.
It was a very informative meeting.
Good, and that's helpful. Um, so do you want to offer any comments or any information that you think that we should consider before we decide what to do?
Yes, um, we've, since we've gotten the license, we've taken it very seriously, uh, to make sure that we sell liquor in a very safe way to the town of Tuxbury. Um, we've put in place that our registers have to, even before this incident happened, um, that our registers have to have an input of the birthday to sell liquor to anyone, so even if they're 80 years old and they tried to purchase, it will not proceed with the transaction unless a birthday is entered or the ID is scanned, and we did train our employees to always ask for a scannable ID that they could scan, and I guess it would avoid any problem like this, and I thought that if it doesn't allow you to, um, proceed with the transaction, that this type of stuff would be safe. We've also put signs for customers that we do check everyone's ID, even, just, they're patients, even if they're older, that we check everyone's ID, and it's mandatory. Um, I'm also tip certified, our area manager is tip certified, so we do train them according to what we were recommended by the, uh, certificate of tips. Also, um, after the incident, we've done a lot of things to prevent this from happening again. Um, we have bars, which is a secret shopper program, it's a third party that we pay that comes in and checks the tobacco, we reached out to them to see if they could check also for alcohol, so it's similar to what the, um, police does, so now they come in once a month and they do their own, uh, check, so that we know that they're complying, because I think that's the only way that we know that there is a human error, because, um, like you guys said, it's kind of hard to prevent that part of, from happening, but we're trying our best. Um, we did do extensive training on all the employees, we did have everyone sign the handbook that now has clearly that they are mandatory to check everyone's ID, and that they did extensive training, so we did have them sign two separate documents, kind of clearly indicating that they're required to check everyone's ID. Um, I also would like to say, apologize that this happened, um, we take it very, very seriously, um, I hope that this never happens again, I am trying my best, uh, to prevent any type of error like this from occurring again.
Do you know, do you have, um, any kind of idea as to why it went off the rails?
Why?
Not ask for the license, or if your systems were in place, what happened?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure why they, they didn't ask, um, I, I'm, maybe they were too lazy to ask, but I, that also confuses me, because they do need to input the age into the register, even though it's easier for them to just scan the ID than to manually type in the actual birthday into the register, um, so I, I don't know why they made that error, um, in judgment. And again, we're trying to really eliminate that by doing this constant check, um, within our company.
How many, how many people do you have working at this particular location?
Um, we have fi, four people.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're all subject to what you just described?
Yes, everyone is subject to that, we, we, um, we train everyone based off of that.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's helpful information, and we appreciate that. All right, do my colleagues have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Kratman.
So you mentioned that the registers, you have to type in a date of birth on that?
Yes.
So did the employee type in a wrong date of birth on that to, for them to be able to purchase that alcohol?
I'm not exactly sure what he did, uh, if he entered maybe his own birthday, but something had to happen for him to bypass that system, um, I'm not sure.
Because that, I mean, that comes into the thing of somebody did it deliberately.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure why he did that, if he was too lazy to ask at that point, I, I'm not sure what his judgment call was for that, um, but again, that's why we're trying to really eliminate that from happening again by.
And I understand, it's like, you know, one thing is for a human error, and then it's another thing is for somebody to deliberately put in the wrong, uh, date, is that employee's still employed, what, by you?
Um, so we terminated him when this happened, we did rehire him after training, um, there was a two-month break between when we terminated the employee, and then we did rehire him, um, after training, and if your question is like, why we have that, that you can enter it, so we did think of just allowing, because it does let you choose to just do the scanning, but, um, there are certain IDs that don't scan, like passwords.
Oh, I, I think your system is a wonderful system, I love the fact that you have, somebody has to actually, for somebody actually has to take the time to manually put something in.
Yeah.
Somebody actually took the time to not, not put it in and put the wrong information in, that's like a whole different matter.
Yeah.
And in the time that they could ask for a real ID, they, they went out of their way.
Yeah.
To do it the wrong way.
Yeah, exactly, that, that was like the purpose, to make it difficult to, to have that type of error.
Yep, all right, I have no other questions, thank you.
All right, anyone else have questions or comments, Mr. Holland?
I just have one, are your registrar operators tip certified also, or just you?
Uh, I am, and our area manager is, our, our cashiers are not tip certified.
You might want to consider having them tip certified.
Yes.
Because you can't be there 24/7.
Yeah.
And it should be someone, if you're serving alcohol, you, you should be someone that's tip certified.
Yes, I, I do agree with that.
All right, anyone else? No? Okay, all right, let's turn to the, um, the actual penalty, um, discussion, does anyone have any comments or motions to offer?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to suspend the license for three days with one day to be served on Tuesday, October 10th, 10th, and two days held in abeyance in the case of a second offense within 24 months.
Second.
Okay, all right, um, we have a motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman, um, to suspend the license for three days, one day to be served on October 10, 2023, and the other two days to be held in abeyance. Um, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative as well, so that would be five to zero. Um, let me, um, let me just close with this, Christina, we, um, we very much value the business relationships in town, as the Chief indicated as well, um, we likewise take the sale and service of alcohol very seriously, um, and sadly, this board is charged with, um, you know, um, meeting out, um, punishment, if you will, on violations, and, um, in the last few years, we've had a number of these hearings, so, um, I think what you heard was, um, there's a desire by the board, and the Chief's recommendation mirrors that, that we're trying to be consistent, that a warning really isn't sufficient, there needs to be a penalty, so, um, I take, and I think my colleagues appreciate, all of the good things that you're doing, and we know it's not a perfect system, but we encouraged you to revisit that and double down, and Mr. Holland made maybe a good suggestion for you to consider, um, and hopefully, um, we won't see you here again, um, I know we haven't seen you before, so we appreciate that, and we wish you well with the efforts to make sure that doesn't happen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in, um, since we're going to draft the letters this week and get them out, uh, can the board vote to authorize me to sign the letters to send out?
Absolutely, can I take a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, motion's offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That'll be unanimous vote, Mr. Montari, thank you, that's a good suggestion. All right, so, um, now I want to thank, um, representatives from Frazier Lane, invite them to come forward. I previously read the hearing notice, I'll note for my colleagues' benefit that abutters have been notified, we have an abutter list, um, we also have, uh, a communication in the form of a memo dated September 6, 2023, from Assistant Town Manager Sadwick, um, and we also have communication dated, uh, 9/12/23 from Alexandra Louder and the Community Development Office informing us that the Planning Board last evening, uh, voted, um, to recommend acceptance of Frazier Lane as a public way, with the condition of final as-built acceptance and subsequent bond release, so a couple of conditions on there, um, but, um, this is, uh, uh, appropriate timing, because we're heading into the town meeting, um, and there are some time, uh, guidelines that we have to, uh, meet in order to, uh, move the matter forward, so let me, um, welcome Mr. Sadwick and ask, um, if you'd introduce yourself, sir.
You bet, uh, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Thank you, sir, and welcome again, it's good to see you again.
Thanks.
All right, so, um, one of you want to just give us, um, a 30,000-foot picture here?
I'll start.
Okay.
Um, only that, uh, street acceptances, that the whole process runs from subdivision process, um, the Planning Board looks at those subdivisions, approves them, DPW acts as the Planning Board's agent, agent as, uh, the street is being developed, uh, we do allow for those, um, properties to be sold during the process, which is under state law that allows for that, um, and then there's a bond taken that, uh, for any remaining work that needs to be done that is held, uh, and typically, we prefer that we get cash bonds for that type of, um, surety, and we, we usually do, so in this case, we have $156,400 to finish the road, the road is complete, um, as, um, Alex references in her memo, the, really, the only thing that's remaining is this final as-built submission, and, yeah, um, my understanding is, is that Mr. Hanley's in the process of completing that as-built, so that's all in process. The Select Board, um, as the governing board of the town, goes through this layout process, which is what we're doing this evening, there's a motion that specifically has to be, um, made for the layout itself, that needs to be put on record with the town clerk, seven days, a minimum of seven days prior to town meeting, and then town meeting technically votes for the acceptance, so this is really a layout hearing, we, we kind of throw the terms around a lot, so, and so I want to make sure that people know that it's, it's a Planning Board subdivision approval, as-built approval with the Planning Board, layout with the Select Board, and then acceptance at town meeting.
That's a good question.
Jim can answer or follow up with any additional.
Do you want to add any comments?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is that, um, uh, we're down to, uh, preparing the as-built in the street acceptance plans, uh, who, over the last month or so, they placed the finished course of pavement, raised all the castings, uh, we set, I think it was 45 bounds, give or take, uh, along the right-of-way, all that work has been done, so now it's kind of on us to get it on a plan, get it back in front of DPW, um, which we anticipate to have done first next week.
Perfect, okay, so you should be good to go for town meeting, for sure.
We hope so, yeah.
Okay. All right, do my colleagues have questions? You want to ask? Is anyone in the audience of the four or five people left that have any comments on this item? No? Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for this plan, it's complete, it's easy to read, um, I appreciate the work of town staff to inform us, um, Mr. Sadwick, my question's for you, um, are there any, are all the sewer and water infrastructure on this development acceptable to the town?
Yes, that, we, we had a very extensive punch list at one time on this project, uh, and, and as everyone knows, this has been out there for, I think it dates back to 2004, when the road was originally built out, but, um, now we've, um, significantly reduced that punch list, two pages down to 13 items, and now it's down to the one item, so we have everything that we need.
Okay, thank you, that's my only question, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my only question, uh, Mr. Sadwick to you, is what is the, uh, phrasing that needs to happen on this?
It's, uh, right here.
Do we actually have that?
Yeah, there's an attachment.
It's this document here, so I can offer it to you, there you go, and we would want to probably follow suit with the Planning Board and just put those two contingencies on, um, on the motion as well.
And just so everyone, just so everyone knows, the, all of the documents that I've provided to the board, the hearing notice and this motion, all come from, uh, memo from Town Council dating back April of 2013, so, this has been our process for well over 10 years.
Thank you.
You made, you made our drop easy, Mr. Sadwick, for the verbiage, so thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, um, if there's no other questions, can I ask, uh, one of you to offer the precise motion that, um, we've been asked to, to vote on?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd make a motion to, uh, motion and vote to lay a public way for your lane, having completed the statutory requirements by conducting a public hearing after notice to abutters, the Select Board pursuant to MGLC 8221 through 24 and MGL 79 1 and 2 lays out Frazier Lane as a public way, accepts said way and any related water or sewer facilities and easements, all is shown on a plan and profile entitled Street Acceptance Plan, Frazier Lane, dated August 15, 2023, by Civil Design Consultants, Inc., 344 North Main Street, Andover, Mass., 01810, which plan and profile have been deemed satisfactory with the condition of final as-built acceptance and subsequent bond release.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion made by Mr. Mackey.
I'll second that.
Please don't ask to repeat it, Mr. Kratman. Okay, um, uh, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that will be a unanimous vote, um, thank you for coming in, and we appreciate your patience while we had to deal with those other items. All right, let's turn to, um, the second, uh, uh, hearing, I previously read the, um, notice, this pertains to Terramore Drive, um, I'll note for my colleagues' benefit, uh, abutters have been notified, the list has been provided to us, you have a memo dated September 6th from, uh, Mr. Sadwick, um, delineating, um, the town's, um, view on the matter, you also, um, we were informed, um, as of, uh, Y- You also, we were informed as of yesterday, last evening, by Alexandra Louder and the Community Development Department that there are at least one outstanding item. Actually, per the engineering division, there are outstanding issues with the stormwater system that must be resolved for the roadway drainage to function properly. And the town currently holds a $220,564.79 surety on the project. So the planning board is recommending acceptance of the drive. It's a public way with the condition of resolution of the outstanding stormwater issues and a final as-built acceptance. So, Mr. Sadwick, any further comments on this particular project?
This one's a little bit trickier with this outstanding drainage issue. Just so the board's aware, the subdivision's a little bit unique in that the drainage is going to be owned by a homeowners association, and the homeowners association is also going to own the open space for this subdivision. So there's this question of it. The town, the town will accept the road, yet the stormwater from the road becomes the responsibility of the homeowners. In this instance, we, as Alexandra points out here, we have $220,000 insurities for this project. The issue about the stormwater, Mr. Hanley can go into detail about what's going on and as far as the weather causing problems, to provide solutions because of how wet it's been lately. You know, the last, and just so that it's on the record for everybody to understand, the last communications from Public Works was that they were not recommending acceptance of this. But I have not had the conversation with them about this $220,000 bond that's in place that could be used as surety that the stormwater issue be resolved. So that's kind of where we fall down on this right now, and I don't know if the applicant or this engineer want to add anything to that.
All right. And before we go further, I want to apologize. I didn't capture, I know Mr. Ginsburg is Mr. Ginsburg, but for the record, we need to get that in. So can you just give us your name?
Matt Ginsburg, applicant.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate it. And Mr. Hanley, you're back on this as well, right?
Yeah, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. So I think probably the best way to kind of just walk through this is kind of chronologically give you a little bit of history and tell you where we stand as of like right now today. So local approvals in the fall of 2020. Matt began construction basically in that same time period. It took us, from the time they started construction, Matt's office and my office have worked together for years, so we've got a pretty decent system of coordinating these as-built surveys that we do. So as soon as April of 2022, we had put together as-bills for, there's five ponds out there. And what we do with those initial as-bills is we make sure that the volume of the ponds is consistent with the plans, and we make sure that the outlet control structures are also consistent with the plans. We took that information, we forwarded that to DPW in April of 2022. December of 2022, they were basically done with the exception of the final course of pavement and setting the bounds. So in an attempt to not have this be last minute, we submitted a, an initial as-built that had all of the information specific to what's in the right-of-way with the exception of those two items. We got a review letter in May of 2023. Typical review letter had a, had a couple of pages of comments. We've whittled those down. We resubmitted a revision to that as-built in July. One of the comments was specific to one of the ponds. We know we have an issue with one of the ponds. The challenge that we've had is like every week, we're getting five inches of rain. It's really been, it's been off the charts even when you look at seasonal extremes. So it's just, the reality of it is that it's been difficult to deal with. We did provide a proposal to DPW in August just to say, hey, this is, we're aware of this. This is a solution that we believe will help alleviate this. When we make these adjustments, it's not, it's not like one and done. It's an iterative process. It's really difficult to model the groundwater below ground based on a couple of test pits and then soils information. That's how we do it, though. That's the cookbook, and that's the recipe that we're asked to follow. So that's what we did. But what we did is we provided a proposal to DPW in August, and then yesterday, as we were going to planning board, we got the letter that Mr. Sadwick referenced, that there was a couple, there were stormwater issues that DPW was concerned with. To give you, to kind of recap where we stand right now, the as-built is complete and has been provided to the town. The roadway acceptance plan has been completed and provided to the town. We met with the planning board last night, and they voted to recommend street acceptance. We have the one issue which we're aware of, which is the pond. But as Mr. Sadwick indicated, there's been kind of a shift in how we, how we work with stormwater over the last three, five years, where the town has asked us to take responsibility for not just the ponds, right? But it's the actual catch basins that are within the right-of-way, the pipes, the sediment forbays, the outlet structures into those ponds. That's a maintenance obligation the town then doesn't have to make for the next 100 years, right? So the HOA is responsible, similar to some of the other projects that we've had in front of you previously. The pond is draining, right? It just does not drain within the requisite 72 hours. So this one's a little different. When we went into, we did a site walk in May with DPW, the pond was dry, right? But as we got more rain into the summer, it fills up, and it's not, right now, it's probably got 10 inches of water in it, just not draining out because we keep getting more and more, more and more water. We have a plan to address it. The challenges have been the weather and the schedule, and these improvements are going to likely be implemented once dry conditions persist. The challenge is, is I can't direct Matt to go out into a pond with an excavator with a foot of water in it because it'll just create an absolute mess, right? So the plan has been, we're going to wait till this thing dries out. It hasn't dried out. The alternative to that was, is to run some sort of bypass pipe to a pond that's downstream that we can do. There's a financial assessment that we'd need to make to be able to do that. The reason we hadn't done that is because we've had this similar situation where we have been allowed, where the town has been, the town has voted to accept a roadway, knowing that it's the, on the HOA to address these pond issues. So that's why we didn't address it all summer was because we kind of had that precedent. We were trying to understand where we sat, and that's why yesterday's letter was a little surprising. Having said all that, right, we're committed to working with DPW. We have a $200,000 bond. Matt's not looking for a bond reduction on this. And we also have a certificate of compliance that we have to get. So we have to fix this thing so we can get our certificate of compliance with conservation so that the homeowners won't be, their title won't be tied up with that. So we have, we have a lot of assurances here that we're going to get this done. We have a plan in place. And what we're looking for tonight is for you to, we're asking that the board recommend street acceptance. And the only other thing I'm, I'll say is that what the town, I think the way the article reads is assume responsibility for maintenance and repair of the roadway. So that's generally now limited to within the right-of-way.
Correct.
Curb-to-curb, even sidewalks, right? And all the stuff that goes along with that, curbing. There's no known concerns from DPW now at this point within that right-of-way that we're aware of. And the only last thing I'm going to say is that in August, we got a storm event that exceeded 100-year storm intensity, right? You guys got six inches in six hours. And if you go to the charts, it's well beyond what you anticipate for a 100-year storm. There was water in the ponds, but there wasn't water in the roadway, right? It functioned properly as designed, so there's no public safety concern. It was a real, real-world stress test, and the new, new infrastructure passed it.
Okay. All right. Let me, Mr. Sadwick, just one question that kind of comes to my mind is, is how do we know that the HOA understands their obligations here? Is there any documentation that they've acknowledged that this is a responsibility that they have as opposed to the developer?
I have, I don't, we don't have any of that documentation.
Would that be something we'd want town council to perhaps explore? I'm just envisioning, five, 10, 15 years from now, you have this going on, right?
Yeah.
It makes sense to me that the HOA says, he has a responsibility, we acknowledge it.
Yep.
Right? I know it's not something we have to make a formal contingency on, or I wouldn't recommend that, but might be a good takeaway before town meeting.
Yep. I agree.
And I assume, Mr. Hanley, to your comments, right, that the Department of Public Works may have a differing opinion. They're not represented here in the room tonight.
Yep, understood.
They're certainly going to weigh in if they're not satisfied at town meeting, and I think the administration would be supportive of their position. So, you know, I encouraged you and your client to make every effort to make sure that there's a meeting of the minds, right? So we're on a timeline fuse here, which I respect, and we don't necessarily want to slow it up here. But with those contingencies hanging out there, there's a risk that somebody's not happy, right? And the townspeople will have to decide that, so. Let me ask if the one remaining individual in the room has any comments on this particular matter. Are you here for that, sir? Is there? Do you have anything you want to offer on this? And if you do, just come to the microphone. I'm guessing you're here for this particular item. Okay. So just tell me your name and your address, if you don't mind.
Yeah, hi, Dom Hamilton. I live at 70 Terramore.
Terramore. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. More of just the interest in the hearing itself, but after, after hearing what we just talked about, I do think it was a good idea to make sure the homeowners understand the drainage obligations, if there is one. I don't recall that obligation myself. It's been a while since I looked at those documents, but I do think it is a, would be a good idea to just make sure that the homeowners are aware of the drainage obligations, just, you know, as part of selling off the road to the town.
Yeah.
I'm in support of that.
Thank you for your comment. Yep. I think the association should at least acknowledge it on behalf of the association members, yeah, so. Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions? Mr. Mackey?
One question, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Hanley, you mentioned two items that basically rolled up into that outstanding stormwater issue. It was some certificate, and what were those two items? Two things you guys needed to get completed before you could actually consider it closed?
Well, so we got a review, we got a letter yesterday from planning that basically summarized the conversation with DPW, and it came down to some issues. So I don't, I know one of the issues, right, is pond number three, in that it's holding water. There were some other items that we addressed as far as addressing their concerns on the final as-built, but I don't have anything formal back, so I'm not entirely positive what those some issues might be.
Okay. I thought you had mentioned two items that were like checks before you could actually close it out anyway. I may have misunderstood.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the two items are that there is a 200-plus thousand-dollar bond that Matt's not looking to get back until this is resolved, or some portion thereof. And then there's also the certificate of compliance that we have to get to satisfy conservation. So we know we have a slow-draining pond, and we know we have to deal with it. Just the season has been very difficult.
Okay. All right. I think someone on my right, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So I appreciate that you, Mr. Chairman, requested more information from the homeowners association. I wanted to know if the homeowners association carries any insurance for property damage that might occur from, or to have to carry the cost. Do they have a bond in case they have to do repairs down the road?
I'm not sure. As of right now, the, we as a developer still owns and maintains the open space in the ponds. We're doing so to make sure that everything is sufficient before we turn it over to them. One of the primary reasons. So I'd have to check the documents as far as, as far as what they will need to carry, but they'll probably have to have insurance, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like we carry insurance right now for the open space, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, correct.
Which pond is it on this layout? Is it the one at the corner of Marshall and Terramore?
It is not. It's actually located here, and it's, of course, on my last sheet of paper. So I'll flip over my easel here with one hand. Thank you. So it's actually this pond right here. So this pond right here is at elevation 112. And the idea of this pond is that it receives flow off of the roadway and then inside of the interior portion of the lot, discharges here at 112, infiltrates a certain amount in, and then discharges out to what's called a wet pond. So if you went out there right now, they both look like wet ponds, unfortunately. But this wet pond is down about three feet from here. So we have, one of the, one of the challenges is always, do we have the difference in elevation to make a pipe work? And we do have that difference of elevation in this case. Where the, where the wet pond sits down around 109, and the top, and the bottom of our infiltration basin is at about 112. So there's like a three-foot difference there. If you went out and you stood between the two, you'd see that the, the wet pond, which represents the groundwater elevation, is about 109. And in my infiltration pond, the water's about 112 and a half, right? So like, it's just not getting down into the ground. And so one of the things that we're going to do initially is we're going to scrape off the loom, right? Because sometimes during construction, you get silt off of the construction site that goes into the pond, kind of clogs that up. So that's the first step. And that's, that's the process, the iterative process that we're trying to, trying to make, make it work.
Okay. Are any abutters experiencing any impacts from this that are not on the site?
So fortunately, this is downstream from all the abuts. It's not, it's not in a situation where if this pond were to back up, it could impact a house. We're not in that kind of a situation. What would happen is it would discharge out into the wet pond, which would then discharge out into the wetland. So it, we don't have, we don't have a house, say, at the same elevation and the same location.
So these abutting properties, it looks like on Marston Street, are they elevated above the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Significantly as well. They're probably, let's see, I'd have to get, look a little bit more detailed, but they're probably six to eight, maybe even 10 feet above the elevation of a pond. So before water ever got there, it's going into the wet pond, which is right next door.
Yeah. With all the rain you referenced that we've had this summer, we've all been able to see new rivers develop in town and go across streets and in people's yards. So that's why I'm asking. So, so it seems that all of the water, even though the thing's not draining, the water is staying on site within reason.
It honestly is a huge stress test. I mean, we got six inches in six hours. God help us if we get more than that, you know, in the future, because a 100-year storm is seven inches in 24 hours. So it compressed it down to a really intense event.
No, I know. What we're seeing this year, a lot of, a lot more 100-year storms. I appreciate all of this, and I appreciate your complete answers to my questions. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just got one last question before we close up. So this is all, this development's been here for a couple of years. Has this pond, it's a slow-draining pond, pretty much what it is. Has it been draining the other years other than what we've been dealing with this year?
Yeah, so it has. We, I have got pictures of it from December of '22. We're in '23, so '22 was dry. We were out there in May, it was dry. So it's a combination probably of the silt and the, and the extreme weather events we've gone. But it, again, it has to drain, and we've got a plan to make it drain.
Yeah, but it's draining, it's just slowly draining. That's the problem. So you're going to go out there, you're going to dig some up, and you can probably put some more sand or whatever you need to do to help with the drainage going through there. But it's actually working, it's not backing up into any properties, it's not causing flooding any roadways, it's just taking, it's too slow for it to get into the wetlands. That's the, what it's doing. Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Let me ask if there's a motion. Again, we need to make a specific motion. It's in the packet, and I would ask you to couple that with the recommendation. packet, and I would ask you to couple that with the recommendation of the Planning Board on the two items that they've identified, if you are so inclined.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion for the acceptance of Terramore Drive, having complied with statutory requirements by conducting a public hearing after notice to abutters, the Select Board pursuant to Mass. General Law C-8221 through 24 and MGLC-791 and 2, lays out Terramore Drive as a public way and accepts said way and any related water or sewer facilities and easements. All is shown on a plan and profile entitled "Street Acceptance Plan Terramore Drive", dated July 20, 2023, by Civil Design Consultants, Inc., 344 North Main, North Main Street, Andover, Mass., 01810, which plan and profile have been deemed satisfactory, with the condition they receive certificate of compliance, final ASBIL acceptance, and subsequent release of bond.
Can I clarify that? Was the COC and the release of bond in the Planning Board's recommendation there? I just want to make sure that it worked correctly.
They were not, those were the two items that I asked for clarification on from you. I didn't want to leave the resolution of outstanding.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. I get, my intent when I conveyed that was that, that's your assurance that we have to fix this pond, is that we do have the bond, and we do have to deal with the COC, right? So, but I'm not sure it's related to the, to the acceptance of the roadway.
It is to me.
We're not going to get the COC before the street is accepted, hopefully.
Yeah, that's the challenge.
Right? So, we come in after the fact, once we get the pond cleaned up, once we get that to work, then, then we'll petition conservation, right? And then once all that's done, we'll hopefully be back for at least, to have the bond released by the Planning Board. So, essentially, what we're looking for tonight is acceptance or a recommendation to accept the roadway, as is, and we'll, we, you have our assurance through the bond that we have posted, that we will, will, will be able to correct the drainage.
I would entertain a friendly amendment, if anyone has one, on correcting that verbiage, just that last sentence, because I'm not reading that whole thing again.
You want to take a stab at that, Ms. Wellman?
I'm just going to second for discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Through you to Mr. Sadwick. What is the likelihood that these items will be remedied before town meeting? Because we're making a recommendation at town meeting.
Yeah, I do think that it may be a high order for the stormwater, but, but I do believe that, again, the town has the surety of that bond to address it. So, if there's going to be an amendment to that motion, I guess it would be that the storm, that the stormwater issue will be addressed, and that the bond will remain in place until such time that it's been corrected. So, that way, we kind of tie those things together. Certificate of compliance, I don't think is necessary, and the ASBIL is part of their bond release anyways, so I think it's kind of tucking the stormwater into the bond, relating the two, so that we make sure that, that there's some surety that that gets addressed.
Yeah, well, and then my other question, and I don't know if you saw this from DPW, is there any concern that the bond is insufficient if the town were to have to make those, if the town were to have to make those changes?
Yeah, that, that bond is, and Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was for the entirety of the street itself, so that was final pavement, curbing, and sidewalks?
Correct, yeah. Final pavement, I think some remainder of some sidewalks, that's obviously completed, and might have been some curbing, yeah. So, the third phase of the project, more or less, plus final paving, so, yeah.
And the sidewalks are done, too?
Yeah, it's 100% complete now, yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay, so, I'm comfortable with that, I appreciate that. I take very seriously the recommendation of our DPW with regard to these products, projects, and the stormwater and the risks, so that's, those are my chief concerns, and I appreciate us going through the work, because we're going to have to convey that to town meeting, and it's going to be confusing to folks on town meeting floor, why we're bringing this forward when it's not ready entirely, you know, and weather's been a complicated factor, everybody understands, but I just want us all to be really clear. So, once again, Mr. Sadwick, if you could indicate that the amendment to the motion would be to remove the COC certification and to remove the ASBIL, because that's part of the process, and remain in the portion that the stormwater is remediated with satisfaction and recognizing that we have a bond.
DPW and that the bond be held until the stormwater is remediated, yeah.
You recommend that the bond will be held until the stormwater is remediated. Okay, so that would be, without repeating it.
Yep.
There we go.
So, your amendment, so just if I could ask you to repeat that so our recording secretary can capture that, okay? I'm sorry, but I want you to do that.
All right, so the friendly amendment to Mr. Mackey's motion would be to remove the certificate of conservation from the Conservation Commission, to remove the portion that's the ASBIL, and to keep the portion that requires, or to amend the portion that requires the stormwater to be remediated, and the town to retain the bond until such time as it is remediated.
All right, okay. Is that acceptable? All right, so we have a motion encompassing the formal, legal, required phrasing, as well as that tag-on, as offered by Ms. Wellman. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative as well, so that's five to zero. So, there's going to have, going to be some explaining needed at a town meeting if there's no further movement forward. And I do think the, and I want to commend the gentleman in the back of the room for paying attention to the issue, because the Homeowners' Association is accepting some responsibility here, and they need to know that if they don't. And I, I, as a board member, would like to know that they've at least acknowledged that if we can endeavor to make that happen. Okay? They certainly have every right to show up at town meeting, but being proactive, I think, is a better approach, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we request that Mr. Sadwick just closes the loop with us, whatever you have from the Homeowners' Association in the form of a memo, just prior to town meeting, so we just kind of know where everybody stands? That would be great.
Terrific.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move a little bit quicker, I think, here. We have discussion of a couple of board appointments. The Council on Aging has an open position, one open position. There are three applicants that applied for the position, and my first question is, do my colleagues want to take action on that this evening? Do they want to speak to any of these individuals, either as a committee or individually? And I will certainly work off of what the preference of my colleagues is.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to take action on it tonight. I know the Council on Aging, Mr. Art Acosta was on the Council on Aging for years, and he was their treasurer, and we have an applicant on here that is more than able to fill that role, which I think would be able to help them in that, and they're working without a treasurer as is, so I would like to make a motion to move forward with it.
Do you want to identify that individual?
Yep, absolutely. I would make a motion to approve Mr. Jeffrey P. DeFoe to the Council on Aging.
I'll second that. All right, so we have a motion to appoint Mr. DeFoe through June 30, 2026. Mr. Holland is seconding that. Let me ask all those in favor to please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, so that's a five to zero vote. We also have the Mass. Cultural Council. We have a roster of 11 vacancies, and we have an applicant, Ms. Rosalyn Impink has applied to serve on the Mass. Cultural Council, and I would ask if there's no opposition to that, that someone may offer a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion to nominate Ms. Rosalyn Impink to that seat on the Mass. Cultural Council through June 30, 2026.
Second.
All right, we have a motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye to make that unanimous. Next on our agenda are, is the subject of constable reappointments. We have two applicants for reappointment, Mr. Paul Michelisi, and you have material that he has presented in addition to communication from the police chief in support of that application, and I would ask if there's no opposition to that, I'd take a motion to reappoint Mr. Michelisi as a constable.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that would be unanimous. And then we also have an applicant for a constable position, reappointment, Mr. Edward Walker, and again, the police chief has supported that application, and you have a number of recommendations, et cetera, in your materials supporting Mr. Walker's candidacy for reappointment. So, if there are no questions on that, I would ask if there's a motion to make that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Krappman, for making the motion, Ms. Wellman for seconding it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well on that, so that's five to zero. We next have the acceptance of a donation to the Tewksbury Senior Center in memory of Madgery Mullaison. This is a donation in the amount of $225, and we're being asked to accept that. I don't know the source of the donation, I'm not sure that it matters, but if we could take a motion to accept the $225 for the benefit of the senior center in memory of Madgery Mullaison, I'd appreciate it.
So moved.
Second.
Second, with gratitude.
Yep, motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? We are unanimous in accepting that, and as Ms. Wellman indicated, we appreciate that donation. Okay, that brings us to the town manager, Mr. Montori.
I have a couple of things. I just have the town council invoices, I'll go first with that. We have two of them, one for July 16 through July 31, in the amount of $2,762.50, and I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Second is for August 1 through August 15, in the amount of $3,102.50, and I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, again, motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be a five to zero vote.
And then, I just wanted to take a minute to talk about a couple of items relating to the DPW operations and staffing. As we all know, it's been quite the month since, I think about August 8 through this past weekend, and I think it's important because, you know, we have a very dedicated group of employees that work in all of our departments, and when we have unique issues that come up in circumstances that they require to put in, above and beyond the normal effort, I think it needs to be acknowledged. And, you know, a couple of instances that I want to just bring up. The first, as everyone knows, and I think it was mentioned tonight, from Mr. Hanley during his presentation, we have had unprecedented rainfall. We are exceeding the 100-year storm limits on many occasions since August 8, and we've had flooding on roads, we've had flooding in our streams, our rivers, and our residents have seen flooding in their yards, in both their backyards and their front yards that they've never seen before. And the DPW, since the beginning of August, has responded to all of these issues and have worked diligently to address issues. But I want to just mention that drainage system, and any drainage system really, can't handle this type of rainfall, as we're seeing, not just in this community, but other communities. I just think, if you look at just last night, what happened in the city of Lomester, and the unfortunate situation therein, and no drainage system can handle the flooding. And the DPW has done a remarkable job responding to the calls and addressing issues, being proactive when we know the rain is coming to ensure that our drainage system is clean, our culverts are cleared, and they're doing the best they can. And I just want to thank them for that work. This past weekend, Friday night, we had another heavy rainstorm that had trees come down and limbs come down. They worked right from the end of the day through the weekend, not only making sure roads were clear and roads were safe, they came in on the weekend to clean up even after that, where there were power outages, they helped make sure there were, trees were cleared, and again, just a great effort. In addition to that, where we had situations where we had too much water, on Labor Day weekend, we had a situation where we had no water to the residence of Catamount and the lodge at Ames Pond. Starting on Saturday of Labor Day, the water treatment plant was pumping an extraordinary amount of water, more than they would normally pump, even during a very hot spell. We knew we had a break in town, we just didn't know where the break was. Staff spent Saturday, along with a private contractor who specializes in leak detection, trying to track down the leak, and they found it at the entrance to Ames Pond, the lodge at Ames Pond, 15 feet below ground, underneath a box culvert. They had to shut the water off to the lodge at Ames Pond and to Catamount Road neighborhood that was fed through by this line, because the treatment plant was pumping so much water, we would have had a bigger catastrophe in the rest of the community. The staff, starting on Saturday night through Monday, worked to figure out ways to get water to the two locations, focusing on each one separately. The lodge at Ames Pond, the property management company brought in tanker trucks to make sure they had water to their tenants. Staff focused, they focused on getting water to their, to their residents, and the DPW Water Department focused on getting water back to the Catamount Road area, again, working through Labor Day weekend to address the issue. They ended up putting in a bypass that was able to get water to the neighborhood, and they were able to do that because we had help from the town of Billerica, we had help from the MWRA, and without that help, we never would have been able to do it. Billerica responded Sunday. Kevin Haddeman, the Director of Public Works, called the Director of Public Works, Fred Russell, who answered the phone immediately and immediately responded. There was no questions asked, he just said, "We need to fix a water break in town," and when that's done, his staff came over with a pump that no one else had, the nearest one was in Connecticut, and came to the scene, and we started working on the issue. It took longer than we expected, we appreciate the patience of the residents, but eventually we got water to the neighborhood. So, the DPW just did an extraordinary job on all of these issues, and I can't thank them enough, and I hope that the residents can appreciate the work that they put in. In addition, I want to thank Market Basket, who donated 200 cases of water that were delivered to each of the households, and, you know, without that, I'm sure would have made things a little bit more difficult for us, but it really was a team effort. Public Safety was involved also. I know the fire department was busy Friday night with a fire, a fire at one of the houses on Maple Street. Staff really has been taxed over the past month, and they should be thanked and recognized for their work. That's it. That's it.
Thank you for those comments. I think, um, you know, we won't repeat them here, but I think the board certainly echoes, um, your sentiments completely, and, uh, each of us has witnessed, um, through the communication chain, um, the activities that have been taking place and the responsiveness that, uh, the departments have been taking, and the effort that's been put forward, so, um, we want to echo your, uh, your comments and, and recognize, um, the extra work. Um, people gave up holiday weekends to make sure that, um, the residents of the community were attended to, um, immediately, and that, that's, um, uh, something that we shouldn't take for granted, so, thank you for that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, um, let's move to minutes, uh, Mr. Holland, there's some minutes here.
Yes, we have several. Um, we have July 18th, do we have any questions?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 18th, 2023.
Second.
Motion that's offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor, moving the minutes of July 18, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a five to zero vote.
Okay, now we have August 7th, 2023. Any questions? Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 7th, 2023.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved.
Okay, meeting minutes of August 8th, 2023, regular session. Any questions? Make a motion to approve the August 8th, 2023, regular session meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, for the motion, and Mr. Krappman for the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five to zero.
Okay, last, we have August 8th, 2023, executive session. Any questions? There are none, I would say, I make a motion for approve the August 8th, 2023, executive session minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's the same. Oh, I'm sorry, for the record, one abstention, Mr. Mackey is abstaining from the executive session on August 8th. Um, so that's a four vote, um, in the affirmative with one abstention for the purposes of our recording secretary. Okay, thank you, Mr. Holland. Um, that brings us to board member reports. Uh, Mr. Krappman, you want to lead us off tonight?
Yeah, sure. Um, my boards, uh, that I'm on, um, were on break during August, so we really don't have any board reports, but I do want to mention, um, last night's activities. Uh, we had the 9/11 event. Um, so impressed by the residents that showed up to that. Um, we got extra chairs and thank, I want to thank the town manager for working with us to get us additional chairs. I want to thank the sheriff's office, big thank you to sheriff's office that came and gave us a tent to put up on the location, so most of the people were covered, but even with that, we had a crowd that, uh, exceeded what we were expecting, so we ran out and we bought additional tents, and the police, the fire, the boy scouts, the girl scouts, all scurried around to help us put those up before the heavy rainfall came in, and we were still able to have the event. We had, my guesses probably about 250 people came out during heavy, heavy rains, to make sure we never forget, and I just want to thank the residents that come out, I want to thank everybody on the committee, I want to thank the, you know, all the participants that came in, and especially the sheriff's department that came over and supplied the tents, so that made every, made the, uh, event possible. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Krappman. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have nothing to report, and, uh, I was going to speak to the wonderful comments the town manager made, so I have nothing else.
All right, thank you. How about you, Ms. Wellman?
Uh, just a couple of things, um, referencing, um, Mr. Montori's comments regarding, uh, the DPW. I just wanted to echo his, um, his comments and thank him as well for his constant communication with the board and keeping us informed for the duration that was, you, out of the ordinary. Not that you commute here with the board, that's very ordinary, but, um, but it just, it was a lot, and, and you did a lot during that time. I also, um, wanted to acknowledge your office staff, who took a lot of angry phone calls from residents, and, uh, that's not pleasant to endure, and they, um, were in good humor every time I spoke to them. Um, I wonder if it's something that we could do, or we could ask if we could bring the DPW employees in and do a recognition, not that they want to come to a late meeting, but, um, we'd like to do that, and then second to that request would be to draft a letter to the town of Billerica formally thanking them for their, their aid, um, as well as, you know, the MWRA, but really Billerica and their staff.
I could draft a le, I could draft a letter for Billerica on behalf of the board, I intend to send one also. I've spoken to the town manager, and I'll follow up with that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we also, and, I also intend to make sure the accommodation letters and all, the files for the, the staff. Uh, I can ask about them coming in. My guess is, I'm going to get the response that, uh, I got when I was thanking them personally, which is, we don't want thanks, we want to get water to the residents.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Um, so, and I appreciate
I'll, I'll ask the question.
Yeah, um, and then, and then finally, um, one of the things I've been doing lately is going to the Andover ZBA meetings, which has been super fun, um, to, um, represent our residents, uh, that live on South Street and have been impacted by a contractor's yard that's, um, built at the end of South Street on Andover property. Um, I want to publicly, you know, he's left, but I want to publicly thank Mr. Sadwick for, um, his ability to take information that the applicant sends to the Andover ZBA on the day of the hearing, which they then transmit to us the day of the hearing, and he basically drops everything to respond to that, um, correspondence, and return it to us as well as to the town of Andover for distribution. Um, the most recent hearing was, uh, last week. They have left the hearing open for now because they did not receive Mr. Sadwick's letter, but I did and told them about it. Um, the, um, it's a really frustrating process for our residents, um, who've lost five acres of trees, um, there is an unmonitored contractor's yard that's happening there, they are storing asbestos on the site, um, they are not following the conditions that have been laid out, they have plenty of opportunity to do it, but have chosen not to do it, um, but say they definitely will if the Andover ZBA grants the permit. So I have asked the Andover ZBA not to grant the permit, but I think that should it be granted, the biggest concern that we have as a community, or one of them, will be the enforcement of that permit, um, and, and the conditions therein, because it is a permit that's held by Andover, but Andover doesn't respond timely to issues because it takes so long to get to the site, and this is what I'm hearing from residents. So, um, I've requested, um, town management to, to see what they can do, um, to talk to, uh, the building commissioner over there, who's been very responsive, um, and to see if we can kind of get some, a better idea about what this will look like for our residents, um, but it's very frustrating, and I will continue to attend those meetings. Um, Representative Robertson also attended the last meeting, um, and there'll be another one, I think, October 5th, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I'll, I know the board will be informed of that, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Holland?
I'm good.
No comments tonight? Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any board reports, I will just note, um, we're going to do something, uh, that doesn't happen all the time here, we're going to meet next week, the 19th of September, um, we will cover the town meeting warrant articles and offer our recommendations, um, next week in anticipation of the, um, October 3rd special town meeting, um, and I know we'll have a few other items on the agenda, including an executive session, um, at the conclusion of the public meeting portion. So I want to thank my colleagues for their accommodation in moving the meeting to the 19th. Um, there was also a discussion about meeting with the planning board and the housing authority, um, and other interested stakeholders, um, that was going to take place, um, I believe it was initially scheduled for next week, um, due to some conflicts, we're going to hold that meeting in the month of October, towards the middle of the month, um, as a joint discussion, um, to focus on our, um, affordable housing needs and overall housing issues. Um, so that's on the list of, uh, coming to a theater near you, um, in the next 30 days or so. Um, so, um, I have nothing else, um, other than, um, to say that we'll see folks here again next week. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, good evening, we're now adjourned.